...the school board. Our next item is the report to student reps and student recognition. You guys are up.
I'm Emily Wopaks and I'm a senior this year. And some activities I'm involved in are drama club, law enforcement, student council. I'm a class officer. And this year I'm going to be going to state for FBLA. And outside of school, I work at the Y in childcare. And my future plans are to attend UW Law P.
Hi, I'm Alex Hernandez. I'm a sophomore. I'm involved in sports. I'm a four-sport athlete and I'm involved in student council. I work at Richard Flippers. And I'm not sure about my future plans.
I'm Jade Vitello. I'm a freshman. I'm involved in volleyball and softball and student council. I work at The Ridges Golf Course and I don't have future plans right now. For solo ensemble. Solo ensemble competition was canceled due to weather. The Class A pieces were rescheduled and our band students received two second-place finishes and our choir students received one, two second-place finish and six start first finishes. Our start first finishers will advance to state and compete in Stevens Point on May 4th. Our Class B and C students had a guest judge come to school and they performed for him during band class where they received three second-place finishes and 11 first-place finishes. Andrew Moose is here to perform a portion of the piece.
Very nice. Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you.
Junior achievement, on February 13th, teams competed at Renaissance. Kaitlyn Lipp and Katie LeVard placed first overall. Derek Coats, Molly McCarthy and Megan Shields placed second overall. Both teams will be competing at the state competition in Sheboygan. Alec Mohaka and Taylor Foote placed first in Division Two. Ariel Zedon, Dulce Wang and Addison Gibbs won the marketing challenge by creating a 60-second PSA for the radio that they will be recording at the station in Wausau in the near future.
For the blood drive, March 5th was the drive and it had 29 registered donors, five deferrals and 24 draws. Four double red donations, 18 whole blood donations and two donors were drawn, but they were Q&amp;S, which means quantity not sufficient. So 22 usable units could potentially save up to 66 lives.
On February 9th, 10 student council members volunteered at Snow Blast at Lake Arrowhead running kids' games. And then on the weekend of February 16th and 17th, 13 student council members worked a total of 42 hours at the YMCA for the gymnastics meet.
For basketball, the girls finished second place in conference and they were nine and three in conference. They were 12 and 10 overall in conference and they lost in the second round to Newman Catholic. Kaitlyn Lipp was first team all-conference and she was awarded Player of the Year for Conference. Jade Martin was first team all-conference and Taylor Martin earned an honorable mention all-conference. Kaitlyn and Jade were also selected as All-Stars for a team. The All-Stars will play on June 14th in the dumps. The boys were 11 and 13th and fifth in conference. Addison got first team all-conference and Quentin was an honorable mention all-conference.
Last Friday, the 8th, the seniors hosted a dance in a small gym and it was $5 out of the door and around 45 people showed up and all were raised. It's for the senior class.
Any questions for our students?
Very proud of all of the students at high school. You make us proud.
Great accomplishment.
A lot of different events. Good job.
Normally I would say, please let our students know that they should leave, but I would ask that they hang on for about five more minutes.
Okay.
If possible. Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to the President's Report. Four of our board members are in attendance. Mr. Gavin is not here tonight due to work. Next item is the reading of a DPI proclamation regarding the School Breakfast Program. Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction, a proclamation, whereas for more than 30 years, the School Breakfast Program has contributed to the health and educational development of our state's children by making nutritious breakfasts available in Wisconsin schools. Whereas the School Breakfast Program plays an important role in promoting healthy eating habits of children and combating childhood hunger. And whereas studies indicate that students who eat breakfast have improved mathematics grades and reading scores, enhanced classroom attendance, reduced absenteeism and tardy rates, fewer nurses visits and improved psychosocial behaviors. And whereas school breakfast programs can significantly enhance the students' learning environment, allowing children to concentrate on graduating with the skills and knowledge they need to be successful in the workplace, or with further studies, a primary goal of every child, a graduate. Therefore, be it resolved that March 4th through 8th, 2019 be proclaimed as National School Breakfast Week, a time to pay tribute to the many concerned individuals involved in this program, including state officials, school food and nutrition service professionals, school administrators, teachers, parents, local civic leaders and many volunteers. National School Breakfast Week, start your engines with school breakfast, May 4th through 8th, 2019. Carolyn Stanford Taylor, State Superintendent. Our next board meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, the 10th with an executive session at 5:00 if so required. Onto our administrative reports. Superintendent Kuhn, student activities.
I wanted to ask our student representatives to stick here for a minute or two because I'm going to go through quite a few things here on student activities and I think maybe they might be interested to hear a couple of things. One, I know Emily mentioned FBLA and she's attending state. And our Future Business Leaders of America group, which Mr. Spencer advises, is heading to the state competition on April 8th and 9th and they have 13 students attending. That chapter of the FBLA is only in its second year. So that is quite an accomplishment to have 13 students attending a state competition in a second year for a group like that and a set of events. And everything from web design to broadcast journalism. What's your area, Emily?
Website design.
Website design. Skills USA, which Mr. Verno sponsors as a student group through the Technology Education Department. They too have two students going to state. They will be going on April 30th and May 1st. And their areas are medical terminology, so the state competition in medical terminology and CO2 cars. Our math league students, they just recently competed on February 27th. 12 students went. And to give you an idea of how well our math team does, 17 students in our division, or 17 schools in our division, we were the number two school at the last meet out of 17. And the cumulative score, I believe there are three math competitions throughout the year, right now we're running fourth out of the 17 for school size. The math students are also busy planning Pi Day tomorrow. There are 17 students between calc and pre-calc that are planning for six different stations of activities for the high school students to rotate through plus pies. They get to eat some pie. And that's going to start tomorrow afternoon, right after lunch. And it runs through the majority of the afternoon. So between Mrs. Martin and Mrs. Griffith, they organize that and those activities. The Spanish club, heading to Costa Rica on March 25th. I get to wake up at midnight and inspect baggage so that we know that nobody's getting kicked off an airplane somewhere. So February 25th through April 2nd, 15 students heading down to Costa Rica. They will spend four of their nights on that trip in homes with families in Costa Rica. So in-home stays. They will plan on, a group of those students will probably see you in May here at the board meeting to talk about that trip. The art show currently happening, Mrs. Grayway has the art show at the Alexander House. And if you haven't had a chance to go visit that, go visit it. It's really cool, especially the downstairs room. We're all like black light pieces of art there. The ninth grade class is working on hosting a track event, like an in-school track event for fifth and sixth grade students. Kind of like a field day activity for like our fifth and sixth grade students. Be it a couple hours and one in the afternoons, probably at the rate, maybe at the rate we're losing snow, could be sooner than May, but probably mid to late May. So that class is very busy. The law enforcement group, they've got two groups that will be taking tours of the jail and they're going to be planning a teen driving event before prom. Mr. Raki and Mr. Crandall are helping with that and help that group. And I go back to the ninth grade, Mrs. Gibbs works with that group. Earth Day, Mrs. Bruner. It's April 18th this year and the theme for Earth Day this year is common ground. This year's theme centers around the idea that we're all on the planet together, students, scientists, farmers, business executives. We are, we come from diverse backgrounds and existences, we're an integral part of the whole and need to coexist on the beautiful planet Earth. So the theme this year, common ground, and that involves all of our students between the middle school and high school for at least part of the day and the high school for almost all of each of that particular day. And they're going to host that again on April 18th this year. I am going to step back to, for just a moment, to Pi Day. We have kind of an interesting activity happening tomorrow as well with Pi Day. If you're around the school at all tomorrow, it's not really a Pi Day activity, but we thought it would be a good activity to coincide with. We are hosting the Manufacturing Innovation Knowledge Experience. It's called the MIKE. It's a, it is an RV that is like no other RV that I've ever seen and it is run by Midstate. And it's basically a mobile manufacturing lab. And it's on the high-tech end. So high-tech engineering and manufacturing and they're bringing that lab to the school tomorrow. And middle school students will take tours of that and see demonstrations of activities in there. And there'll be some high school students as well who've signed up or want to see that or have more interest in the science and technology areas. So that will be happening as well. And that's thanks to Mr. Verno bringing that in as well as Midstate. So if you're around, feel free, I know we can get other people in to see that. It's quite an experience. The middle school as well, the middle school student council hosted a dance. So Mrs. Waltonberg and the middle school student council group hosted a dance on February 8th. You heard about the high school dance. Mrs. Darnell is the senior class advisor along with her partner in crime as the chaperone, Mr. Ayers, chaperone, and did that. We have the prom at the end of April that Mrs. Leonard and the junior class are putting together and getting set for that and they have been active at that already. We have an eighth grade class trip to Washington DC at the end of the school year. Along with, if you're a business owner or an organization, you might have seen from the publications class, a request to put an ad in the yearbook. So the yearbook students are busy right now, including I think one sitting across. Did you send me an email in your book, Alex? Or am I thinking it's somebody else? Oh, that's a different student. I apologize. It was Quentin who sent me that email. So, and that's Mr. Spencer and then given Mrs. Waltonberg with the DC class trip. So I mentioned a lot of staff members and I want to make sure students, that's why I asked you to thank all of those staff members. They are giving you a lot of time. But also congratulations to each of you and all that you do. And these are the things, this is my short list of student activities since essentially late January until now and through kind of the end of the year. And I know I haven't hit everything. We've got a concert next week on the, as Jade mentioned, we have a concert coming up next week on Tuesday and another concert in a drama club production with Mrs. Rapiski in May. So, and I didn't even get into baseball, softball and track.
Questions for Mr. Kuhn?
We're a small school, but we have a lot to offer.
A lot of great activities.
Stacy, will you check and see if the sign-up sheet has any names on it for me? I forgot to pick it up. I apologize.
Thank you guys for speaking. Good job. I didn't look off to get out.
You're more than welcome to stay, but if you'd like to flee, you can do so. Thank you for coming.
Thank you for staying. Actually, Mrs. Christie.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kuhn. Next is the report on 4K, 5K registration from Mrs. Christie.
We are right in the middle of 4K, 5K registration. We've had a lot of excited, nervous new parents to the district coming in to sign their kiddos up for 4K and kindergarten. Last year at this time, we had 14, maybe 16 kids signed up for kindergarten for the following year, ended up with 20 some. It was, it all turned out okay. But at this point, we have 22 kids signed up for kindergarten. And we have six out of nine of our open enrollment spots applied for. So that means we still have three spots left for open enrollment, which is, which is good. And that goes until April 2nd, I believe, is when our open enrollment closes. In addition, our 4K, we have 20 kids signed up for 4K already, which is more than we have, currently have in our 4K. So the fact that we are that far along and it's March is, looks very good for our numbers. We have people coming up right through August signing kids up for 4K. So, and kindergarten and other classes. So our numbers are looking, are looking very promising. So a lot of people hearing good things about our district and wanting to come here. In 4K, there is no open enrollment. We have an agreement among our districts that anyone can sign up for 4K anywhere between Rapidsport and Acusa. So we don't have to worry about a cap or anything for that at the Y.
Any questions for Mrs. Christie? On the sign-up sheet, no one had indicated an attempt to speak. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to address the board? Moving on then to the consent agenda. Consider approval of minutes for the past meeting, February 13th and February 18th.
Second.
Motion of the second for those minutes. Any discussion? Not very many. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. The financial reports. Do we have any gifts, Lisa?
Yes, I have one to report again. The anonymous donor continues to send us just about weekly, Mrs. Grayton. We get weekly just about donations. So for February, we have another $80 that will go into the helping families, helping families account. And I also wanted to report on a budget revision for Fund 21. And that regard is in regards to the donations that have been, we have received for Kim Hansen. Several of those donations just revised the Fund 21 budget line.
I have a motion to approve the financials.
So who?
Second.
Motion of the second. Any discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion is approved. There is no unfinished business. Moving on to new business, consider approval of the 2019-20 CISA 5 service contract.
You need a copy of that? No, we're good, okay. Do you? No. So majority of our CISA contract is related to special education services. This is, so we belong to CISA 5 or a member school of that cooperative. This includes the cost for our district speech and language teacher, our district school psychologist, and then specialized services provided to students, maybe hearing impaired or blind or need occupational therapy, physical therapy. And there's quite an extensive list of services. The interesting thing about this contract, this is only a projected cost contract because they bill us for what is actually used. And there are line items that may be on what looks like the contract that if, because of our size as a school district, if one student moves, that may eliminate the line item off of what we actually pay for the service. So this is essentially their projected contract. Biggest increases probably come from a couple areas. One, we have quite an increase in our occupational therapy line. And again, this is student, these are lines that are student-driven by student need. So, and that's their projection for next year. And it's from this previous year, about a $5,000 increase for next year, just over $5,000 on that particular line. The school psychology services, Mrs. Christie could probably talk to the fact that we have, we have used every dollar imaginable of that particular contract line this year. The number of referrals that we've had have caused her to work quite a few more days. We had anticipated 38. The next contract, because of the overage in days going into this, this next year, the next contract is anticipating 50. This year it'll be about a $4,000 bump in, again, those services based on increased days. So she does testing, she does, she does some of the writing of the initial IEPs.
Yeah, she does most of the, any referrals that come in for new initial IEPs. She takes care of most of that testing, qualifying, along with special education teachers. They kind of work together. So she does most of the initial IEPs. I've been taking care of as many of the yearly, annual ones as possible because she's just out of days and out of time. But, and so she will also serve as the LA for those initial IEP meetings and we have had quite a few. And some of the testing she's had to do is extensive too, depending on what the disability of the child or what we're looking at possibly qualifying them for. So she's had her plate to full for sure, so.
We're looking at, the biggest, probably single line increase is speech and language therapy services. From a 114-day contract to 150-day, 150, two-day contract over the last couple of years. And again, you can speak to the, to the number of students that are receiving those services has ballooned.
Yeah, I think I showed you some numbers, some projected numbers when we talked about our, our open enrollment, special education, numbers of how many students that we've increased. I mean, our population has increased as well. Our numbers overall have increased, therefore that kind of just goes right along with it. So that number is, has gone up. That's not projected for next year as much as we've just had to keep adding on days. So it's more of a realistic viewpoint of what we've really used and qualified.
So with that particular position, we have had some discussion, really at a 10,000-foot view at the moment, you know, is there a point where we bring those services simply in-house and don't contract those anymore? What is that point? Would it even be palatable to the person who's currently doing it based on, you know, she's currently a CISA employee under the CISA benefit package and all of that? Would they really want to leave that or not? What, what would that look like? You know, and again, we haven't, that's not a recommendation that we're doing that at this point, but we have had, we have had from time to time, the discussion is, will there be a point when it just makes sense to do that? The one downside to that is if the numbers fluctuate the other way, then, then you, you know, there's probably the most ability is running it through CISA.
Well, it takes away a bunch of liability too, that they've got all the proper filings and so forth.
Yeah, they, and this person's really doing it on our behalf, so. Yeah, I mean, it, it creates another pocket that way, so to speak, yes. Yeah. But, but they're doing it on our behalf and so we're the ones who ultimately are going to pay for it. So overall, it really represents a $28,000, potential $28,000 increase. And I'll just say this in closing, I certainly recommend that we continue on with this contract. We do receive a couple of other services that are called school improvement services, some services through our career tech side. Those are, you know, in the overall scheme of this contract, they're fairly minimal. They do provide us quite a bit of technical support in terms of grant writing for a couple of our grants, in terms of professional development support, the ability to access professional development at either a reduced rate or no rate through CISA 5 directly. And we do take advantage of that quite often. And so I'd recommend the approval of the contract. This probably speaks to the idea of inflationary costs and why our overall budget is to a certain degree in the shape that it is in, based on the funding formula.
So can I ask, can you give me a ballpark guesstimate in terms of the IEPs that are taking a considerable amount of this, this contract's time? Are these, are these new diagnoses that are coming from kids that are showing up? Or are these people coming in with existing IEPs that have to be redone?
Yes.
Both. Is it more of one than the other or is it pretty much coin flip?
Yep, exactly.
Okay. Okay.
And we try to, you know, with our RTI process, we try to, you know, use those interventions to head some of those things off, especially at the elementary level, so that the kids that just need that little boost don't get referred. For special education, that's a whole idea of RTI. But then we do have kids that come in and then we have to adopt those IEPs from either out of town, out of district, out of state. And then there are some that are referrals. We've had some kids come in with the referral process already started, so we've had to kind of start over. Kids move into the district as well. It's really, it's really a.
It's all over the map.
Yes.
Any further questions or discussions regarding the CISA contract?
I don't. I mean, it's, we have to do it. We have to give education to these kids and the services. I think every year, next year really need to look at that. I don't, I'm not a fan of a service contract with anybody outside service. I know some of these we can't do in-house, I realize that, but we need to look at, seeing if we can try to do something in-house, maybe looking at an employee that can take some of them on. And we kind of mentioned that in your speech. That's something I like to see us look into next year. I know the numbers go up and down, but really look at. I know the numbers go up and down, but really look at if we can get an employee here that maybe can take some of those on. Maybe even better, the program we have now. Maybe we get somebody that can advance them so we can get the kids out of that IP class of that, and different services, so that we don't have to keep putting kids back in it every year.
Yeah, we try.
And I know, yeah, I'm not, I'm not, I mean, I know.
Right, right.
It's just.
Right.
If every year that keeps going up like that, that's going to be a big budget number.
Right. And a lot of these services, like a school psych, you know, to have one day a week to find somebody to do that, not to mention what that would cost us is, you know, because then you have to think benefits and all that kind of things too. Speech and language, right now, I, I don't know, we'd have to do some costs analysis and crunching as to what, not just to pay a salary, but also benefits and all of that to a person. You know, it's kind of that, you're exactly right, where we have to weigh those, those things. OT, PT, any of those, people that come once, once a week, or every other week, or just service kids occasionally, we're getting our bang for our buck that way. Because finding someone with that kind of certification and qualification for the small amount of time we need them. So, what CISA does is kind of pool all of those resources, because those, for instance, that occupational therapist is in five different districts. And so, they pool the resources, and that's how that, that's how it ends up saving us money in the end, even though this looks like a lot. What we get for this, I think, in that cooperative is really.
Right now, Bill, I have one person that you haven't.
Correct.
No.
Correct. Unfortunately, that, yeah.
A lot of this is just individual specialized, so.
Right, right.
Who tests though? A kid comes in here with an IP and we put them in that, who, how do we, who tests them to get out of that if he can advance out?
That's our, our school psychologist and the IEP team itself.
So, CISA, CISA 5 essentially also evaluates the kids to move them out?
Nope, 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 nope. Our school, our school psych, who is hired through CISA, comes and, and does like the initial referrals and some of the testing for those kids. Our special education teachers are the ones that set those goals, see if they meet them, if they meet or exceed those goals, if we still need to continue that, then we meet annually to see, do we need to add something? Do we need to change something? Or can we release the kid? So, if we can release the child from that, that individualized plan, then that's our, that's our ultimate goal.
And we do, we do release students.
We do.
And that, yeah, so we should make sure that you know that.
Essentially, the goal is to get them out of this program.
Right. And I would say speech and language is where that happens the most often. Where we have the, the younger kiddos that need that speech help, and they usually, not usually, but more often than not, we have, we have a lot of kids that we end up, you know, releasing from speech and language. There's just more that come in, so.
So, the, the other piece to the CISA contract, it provides us the stability sometimes in the positions. School psychologists would be one. How many? And I don't, we didn't have stability in school psychologists for quite a while, but what we did have with CISA 5 was the peace of mind knowing we didn't have to worry about it. CISA 5 might have changed them on us a couple of times, but being such a small, you know, to have a school psychologist, or to have a school psychologist all day is a hundred thousand dollar position, and they really provide us that, that ability to just hone in on that piece, so.
And we've got to take everybody in and, and give them the services they need. It's just a tough one where, a big, big chunk of our money has to go to a service when we could.
Probably the.
Two other kids that are out there putting as much effort into it also.
Probably the, the one area that really would, would assist in that is, you know, we, we transfer almost $300,000 a year from our general fund into our special education fund. And that, and to see the state do something with that would really be a help, so. Any further discussion regarding the CISA 5 service contract for 2019 and 2020? Not hearing any, I will call for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Second. Motion's been made in second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Consider approval of assistant track coach. I'd recommend the approval of Mac Bogdan. And I'm going to let Mr. Miller speak to Mac's qualifications.
Mac is a former student of mine from several years ago, one age. But him and I have been working together very successfully for the last two seasons at Nacusa. He's a science teacher at Nacusa, working together for their cross-country program. And Mac is very much of the attitude, we are going to have a good time and pull the head fake, and in the meantime, we're working hard through that same process. He is a, he's an outstanding young man who puts kids first, and that is our attitude, and that's what it is. So, I highly suggest that, I appreciate the opportunity to have him working with us.
Okay. Thank you. Any other discussion or questions concerning this position? Call for motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Consider approval of assistant baseball coach. I'd recommend the approval of Ryan Bowden as our, am I saying that right?
Bowden, yes.
Yeah, as our baseball coach. And Ryan's excited for that opportunity. Mr. Frandl, you want to add to that?
Came to us, he was actually going to be probably one of our umpires this year. Had a whole calendar full of games, but when the need for an assistant came, he was excited that maybe jumping on the other side of the baseball realm. So, he's been around the game, seen the game, knows a lot about it, just doing it in a little different capacity this year for us, so. I know he's kind of met with the kids. He worked quite a few games for us this winter for basketball. So, he's been involved with the school already, and he's kind of been seen, and kids know who he is, so I think it's going to work out well.
He lives in the area, obviously, somewhere.
Yes, yes. He's, he was living in Porch for a little while, then now he lives in Rapids. Yep.
Anything further for this position?
Happy that we found two good candidates.
Yeah, absolutely. Call for motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in second. All those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion is carried. Consider approval of snow day makeup schedule. This is a little after the fact, but we have to get it moving. I mean, it's kind of talked this through, so I would ask your formal approval of the snow day makeup schedule. Probably the discussion would be, what would be your pleasure in terms of additional days? But I will say this, I certainly built this keeping in mind that we had to have contingency time built in. So, there still is a bit of contingency built into all of the time that we have, in case, for instance, knock on wood, we see Mr. Martenson out digging in front of, this is a high school one day because the water main is busted and we can't get water.
Don't say those words.
Yeah. You know, things like that come up, including the potential of more weather days. But we've done this certainly with the idea of trying to keep away from going into another week of June, and trying to account for as much of that learning time as we could. And maybe we just cross that other bridge when we come to it, unless you have. Do you, do you know right off the top of your head what, what Rapids and Nacusa have done? Everything that we have done, add time, add days. Rapids, Rapids, I think they're starting high school now at Wisconsin Rapids around 5:30 AM. Actually, they've added, they've added time to about the end and beginning of their high school day, I know, quite extensive time. Almost 20 minutes, maybe more. Nacusa's added the 10th as a class day, I believe. Yep, yep. And we, you know, and that, that could be a possibility, could also be a possibility. And again, depending on when it happens, we might have to just say, okay, it's, we're just, we're not, again, I have a bit of contingency built into this, in case we have, you know, if we had to wash another day on this because it was so late in the year or something, we, you know, depending on all the other plans, they start going into motion. We, you know, we could do that. I, I left contingency, and I didn't want to leave us scraping, so. February was the snowiest month in the history of the state, so I guess, all things considered, we got out of it reasonably well. And we, you know, we could look at, you know, we could look at an additional time add, a few minutes and probably, but, you know, I don't know, there's a point where, again, you start to lose effectiveness. And that seemed to, that's gone fairly smooth at this point, so. Everybody showed up on the first day. That retains some time, so.
I think you did a good job. Hopefully, we're not going to the 10th, no matter what it takes.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other discussion regarding the snow day makeup? If not, I'll call for a motion.
So move. Second.
Motion in second to approve the snow day makeup schedule. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Opportunity for individual board member comment. Start with.
I just want to congratulate all the athletes and the different activities, the different clubs on here, and a lot of students, like Kyle said, making different events, and it's pretty, makes Port pretty proud, even if they have any students who are at different events. So, good job of the coaches and leaders of those groups, the teachers, it takes everybody to put that together in, organization with Kyle and the school to make sure those kids can get to those events and things like that. The last thing I want to say is, is obviously, big thing, referendums are coming up here at the end of the next month, so people can get out, come to these meetings, voice your opinions. Good to see a little better crowd tonight. There's an opportunity for everybody to speak, obviously during the board meeting, so please get out and speak at the board meeting, let your thoughts or any questions you have out. So, if there is something that's bothering you, we can get it out on the table and try to address it, so. Other than that, that's all I have.
Good to see the students once again coming here and talking about all the activities that they're in. Excellent list that Kyle had, I mean, how many state qualifiers and so many different activities. Good to see that we have that much participation for such a small school. The math league stuff, that's really, I mean, exciting for me, I'm a math guy, so that's pretty cool. But even the FBLAA and the forensics.
Do we have forensics?
Yes. We didn't, we didn't talk about that tonight, though. But, but, but I know that we had some qualifiers for forensics, and I think we talked about that last meeting, so it's great. The only other thing is, watch the ice, it's really slippery out there.
I will just add that the forensics people, I believe, we will have some forensic students here.
Will they do a skit?
And, and doing a, doing a presentation for us in the coming months. Mrs. Kleifken, because I tried to mention a lot of staff members' names, is one of our advisors for that.
Excellent, because.
I did not mean to omit them from the list.
Yeah, I'm glad I accidentally brought it up.
I would just like to throw out kudos to Natasha Grayway. I know getting ready for the art exhibit at Alexander House is a huge, huge undertaking, and I think it's great that we have the opportunity for our students in Porter Edward Schools to showcase their art talents. Very nice exhibit at the Alexander House. I'd also like to thank Megan Shields. Last week, she did a presentation for the Rapids Area Retired Educators, which I belong to, and I lined her up to speak to the group. And she did an awesome job talking about kids from Wisconsin and how she got into it and telling us about it. Everyone there was just enthused with her presentation, said she did such a good job, and just very proud that she was a J E H S student, and made me feel very proud.
And she was just accepted again.
Yes, yes.
For another season. So, good job. I would just pair up everybody else's said. I encourage the orders of the district to get out and inform themselves about the upcoming referendum. Watch for the, the district mailing. Make sure that you go to vote on April 2nd. And congratulations to all of the young people who've done so well in so many different, different areas. Establish future board meetings. We've already discussed Wednesday, April 10th with an executive session at 5:00. And then Wednesday, May 8th with an executive session at 5:00, if so needed. I'll just add to that, next week is not, so next week, the informational meeting is not an official board meeting. Correct. But we will post it so that it's, so that all of you are able to attend and be there in that same place and do that. But it won't be posted as a official board meeting, it'll just be a place for board members to be. Okay?
And that's at 7:00.
7:00 here at the elementary school.
Wednesday, March 20.
Do we, what do, so what, in the June, or June 12th would be the next date? Am I tentative to reset that? That being said, I'll call for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Motion in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You adjourn. Thanks, guys.